All commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Peach, who is not going to be able to be here today. It's believed that?
Yeah.
Mr. Man, please.
Go ahead and lead us.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
A nation, our God, in this home, with everything that's brought.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is approval of minutes. By Commissioner Ross to approve the minutes, we have a second. Second by Commissioner Ingean. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Minutes are approved. Approval of the order of the agenda, and I think we have an addition, Commissioner Ingean.
Yes, I would take a move of addition to the agenda, there will be a discussion with some folks here on the Marfield, possible Marfield interchange, and also Barry Wilbur from the Grand Forks Chamber is here to speak on that subject.
Okay, and we'll set those right after the consent agenda in front of the sheriff. He's shaking his head, these armed guys, but. Well, we're kind of apologetic, they didn't get on our list here, so we're gonna move them up. So, okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ingean to set the Marfield. People want to talk about Marfield interchange here, and it's. Barry Wilbur, it's gonna give us just a brief update. So, do we have a second? Thank you, we have a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, and let's put them at right before the sheriff's office report. Right after we take care of the consent agenda. Okay, the consent agenda is next, does anyone have any items they'd like pulled from the consent agenda to discuss? Very done.
Motion to approve the consent agenda is presented.
Motion by Commissioner Ross to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ingean, all in favor signify by saying aye. Or Ross, pardon me, it was Commissioner Ross. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Consent agenda is passed, and we'll hear from the folks on Marfield. And Bill first.
Chairman, all of you commissioners, appreciate your time today. I'm currently the chair of the chamber, and we're working hard to improve our region. We have eleven hundred member chamber group. We're here to talk about interchange at Marfield. And we have a lot of support from ag-related companies and companies on that area, and it's just time. I became chamber chair, I said, very red, built a bridge anywhere since I was born, but it's a problem. So, we're here to work on that and go hear a few people talk. But some of the support is means you people know, but the useful bangers, the Drieses, Batmans, Adams, Browns, others, they're all really ready. And so, I am on a couple statewide committees and boards, and I know there's quite a bit of funding around, so the timing seems good for that to help everything. At the end, you know, we would really like to count it again and fund the NEPA process to be the least entity for the Marfield interchange. And I think, Nick Brown, next, thank you.
Nick Brown, Brown Corporations Business Park Properties, and a depot, and then kind of speaking on behalf of some tenants as well, Business Park. We've been needing this interchange for quite some time, it's been well over twenty-five years that we've been working on it. So all of our tenants and a depot and the farming activity that we have in that area, we have well over a hundred trucks that are going through town, but don't need to go through town. So, it's a safety issue. I think it's important that we get the shovel ready with the environmental process and get that ready so that we aren't shut off another five, ten, fifteen years. It's a big important part of keeping really safe and growing the sound. Thank you.
Cody Michael with Columbia Green. We have, we have an elevator right outside, inside of Marfield. We push thousands of trucks, fifteen hundred trucks a year. Most of them, there are a lot of us go during low limit season, it's a good time when we're shipping containers over to Italy. In order for them to get to us, they gotta drive through town, because it's low limits, they can't run through airport road due to low limits, so by having interchange, they could go directly out interchange right into Marfield, they wouldn't be driving into Grand Forks, same thing as he said. Safety, all of the above, be easier for everyone. Yeah. Same, yeah, farmers, same thing, they come in from the other side of town, they've driven through town with us, then interchange to take interstate, straight shot. Be easier for them.
Russell Perry, Perry Real Estate Development, bear originally from my, didn't have to talk, but now that I'm here, here I am. No, I would just say if we're on behalf of, yes, the development community, obviously, it becomes a county issue because it's in the county, but it really would help spur the growth of Grand Forks. Obviously, don't need to bore you guys with, obviously, the complexities of thirty seconds and how some of those dangerous intersections are on thirty seconds. I think it's kind of logical time, which also will, without question, helps spur development on further south as well. So, on behalf of the development side of things, too, not just the a, it'd also be well, well worth it, for sure.
Dave Zavro, RG Zavro, that's also who I chaired the infrastructure committee for, for the chamber. I said, I had the luxury of sitting on Ad Al Committee that studied traffic patterns in Grand Forks. And like Russell said, there's a lot of congestion on thirty seconds and north-south traffic. There will be some relief that would come, and I don't, yeah, P O would be willing to facilitate some more information on that. Using the interstate for north-south traffic travel would greatly increase the safety of the community as well.
That's, that's our, Mr. Chairman, I mean, that's kind of our, our feel and. We're supposed to take questions or not?
We might, we might.
Okay. I just got back from the North Dakota Association of Counties, and I went to the North Dakota DOT meeting in Bismarck with Dick West, and I did bring up the bridge. And I told them that they would be hearing something from the legislature on this thing. Kurt Kruehn, I would imagine, is gonna be involved in it. Talked about the Marfield Bridge, I mean, the, the, the bridge over I-29. And they said that that thing would, more than on and off ramps, would have, the whole bridge would have to be replaced. It would have to be wider. So, that would take federal highway, would have to approve that. So, that's just another hurdle, but I did bring it up, and I said they would be hearing more about it. It does sound like maybe these bridges in town are gonna go. So, I think the city of Grand Forks, and I don't like speaking for them, but I think they would be more than willing to go along with the Marfield Bridge, so, but I did bring it out.
Thank you for doing that to me. Nobody's in disagreement that something else happened there. Which goes first, or which goes second? Yeah. And we just gotta have it for safety and economic.
My question would be, is there gonna be competition with the city if they decide they wanna put an interchange in at forty-seventh?
I don't see it, I mean, different, different groups, there's quite a separation. We're pushing all the bridge activity, all the same.
Yeah.
You know. From a former V truck driver, I think, that's a really important center, but.
Well, I don't, I don't disagree with you, but there's some property at forty-seventh now that I'm sure has got a special interest that's gonna want it here.
Yeah, I think, I don't know a hundred percent, but I think the NEPA is in the works for the forty-second underpass and forty-seventh already.
Okay.
And then told that, I said, show me in writing.
Yeah.
Because they told me when I built the Hilton, that an underpass is going in soon, twenty-one years ago. So, I spent half my life waiting for that train, you know. So, it's just time for safety and economic to go on all the fronts. I don't, I don't see it as any competition, I know the chamber and members don't, it is see it as these things need to happen. They go through Fargo ten times a week, and they pop up bridges like, you know.
I know, every mile, there's one down there.
And so, some are in town, some are out of town, you know, I go down to Watten quite a bit, and they, they, they've got the system figured out. I personally don't blame it on any of the past current, whether it's county or city, but I think that the urgency and the way they fund them, yeah, might need to be tweaked.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, and Mr. Brown, they did bring your name up. I had the meeting, they couldn't remember the name of the company out there, so, but I told them. But anyway, I told them they probably would be hearing from Kurt Kruehn since he just came in, that there will be some legislative things going on trying to get that bridge, so. Kurt, you missed it, but I talked to North Dakota DOT yesterday about the Marfield Bridge, and I, they talked about the federal government, their federal highway would have to get involved with on-off ramps, but that bridge totally would have to be replaced, it's not wide enough. And to facilitate the on-off ramps, and it would take federal involvement in that to get that done and approve them. So, just so you know, we're headed back.
That I did not know.
Okay.
I wish to be able to figure that out.
Okay.
Just got more expense. What is it these days? So, good, Barry, anything else, thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, there is federal money available, and hopefully, we're gonna be able to get a couple of these big infrastructure projects built this cycle. It's a once-in-a-generation opportunity to have that money, so, the NEPA process is the first step, forty-second NEPA is done, forty-seventh is very close. So, this would be the next logical interchange on the interstate from a community perspective. So, hopefully, the county can find its way in its fights at the next cycle or two, to put some money in there to get the NEPA process started. You know, maybe meet with the city to talk about prioritization of those different projects. Now, you have the MPO to time a lot of that, they do a good job as well. I know Stephanie's new and is doing a great job, so, that's the vehicle that you can use, obviously, do that. But, I guess, the business committee, we just wanted, you know, wanted the commission to know that you do have the community support to keep moving forward with these big, big infrastructure projects, so, but I also wanted to just let you know.
I'll interrupt, you just want to talk to Mr. West right away about that. He's out at Bismarck right now, we're meeting, so, when he gets back, we'll talk to him, he'll get a role again.
And I see you all often enough, I'll get an update, I'm sure, from you, so. But I also wanted to let you know, the chamber board met Thursday, and, you know, I was on the Home Rule Charter Commission, and appreciate being part of that process. Also want to thank Commissioner Falk and, and Mr. Ford for coming to the chamber board meeting about a month ago, and giving us a little pitch on that in terms of the need, and our board sees that need, and we voted to support the county's Home Rule Charter efforts. We'll be sending an email out to our roughly thirty-five hundred people in our database a couple of times before the election, encouraging them to vote yes on the Home Rule Charter, so, I want to let the board know that as well, so.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you putting this on the agenda, thanks for squeezing this in.
You're welcome to leave, guys, all right, Mr. Campbell, go ahead. We're gonna have to throw him out.
One other thing that we should have brought up is Kurt and I and David and Barry have met with DOT directors in North Dakota, Minnesota. This doesn't really affect Minnesota, but the funny thing, I can't say it enough, between COVID dollars, North State rocking it right now, so, it's never gonna get cheaper, and it's never, you know, sooner better, so, I just wanted you to know, they, they were very supportive, especially in North Dakota, so, thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Rice oil might rise again, I see, so, for North Dakota, it's probably is our best time.
Revenue, revenues are up.
Thanks, gentlemen. Eric Snyder, you're next.
And Chairman Falk, members of the commission, just a quick note to piggyback on what they're talking about, I'm currently dealing with an issue with Grand Forks Township and Brenna Township regarding trucks and low limits and use of roads. Those townships are currently paying thousands and thousands of dollars to try to maintain roads. They're trying to utilize gravel north and south to access interstate, so, it's directly affected by Mr. Brown's business and other businesses out there. And it's a very interesting topic, I'm sure both of them townships would support that. A note on the overpass on County Six or Marfield. That is one of the most dangerous overheads that we have in the county, especially in the winter. They, it's whiteout conditions and the snow, the angle that it's at, it just drips perfectly, it causes very dangerous conditions, so I could see why they would need to completely replace that. Moving on to what I'm actually here for today, the sheriff's office has once again applied for the ND, North Dakota Department of Transportation Traffic Safety Grant. What this grant does is it provides us a hundred percent reimbursed money at overtime rates for our debt piece to go out and enforce traffic, whether that be drunk drivers, speeding citations, texting and driving, distracted driving, seatbelt violations, et cetera. It allows us within the county to shoot towards our goal, which is a state goal, have zero deaths on county roads and state roads, so I really, really would hope to get to that goal. We do have a lot of patrol out there right now, but this allows us to maximize that during peak times or for specific events. What I'm requesting from the board today is Chair and Ms. Nelson's electronic signatures on documents accepting the, the award of the grant for the traffic safety.
Hey, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Ross with Chair's signature and Ms. Nelson's signature. Okay, second, second by Commissioner Ross, any other discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I have nothing further to thank you.
Now, we go to the general sale price and county tax title property with Nelson.
The motion that I need to approve, there are now thirteen. I need to set the minimum sale price, I put a hard copy on her desk, I have scanned this in. What if you, earlier, it was probably twice as small. So, on Friday, that's the way it was, and today, now we have thirteen that are on, so you do have a hard copy. I recommend the board approve their praised value of their real estate acquired by tax deed and to set the minimum sale price at the amount of three years taxes due, plus special assessments, penalties, interests, and costs, plus an amount equal to the estimated taxes and specials for the current assessment year, and set the property appraisal period for October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two at four p.m.
I think a motion approved. Language that she just read from page seven, we have the documents here.
Do we have a second? Second, second by Commissioner Ross, any further discussion on the tax property? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Chair, I have one question for you. On the payment of special assessments, can they have to pay off the entire assessments that are attached to the property, or is it just an annual installment?
The annual installment, that's the question.
Okay, then, finance and tax, Director of Subrecipient Monitoring Policy.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, you had approved our subrecipient monitoring policy on September sixth. We added one item to that policy, and that I have highlighted in yellow there. And so I'm asking for approval of my policy.
Is this something the state auditor helped me to bring out?
No.
Oh, okay. I thought it wasn't, it just occurred to me.
It was brought up by the state's attorney.
I, oh, no. She's dealing in minutia, too. Well, okay, I gotta call it, gentleman back, and it just, that prompted my memory, so, okay, Ms. Wong said, thank you very much. Any discussions, motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation.
Lot of the recipients as highlighted, yeah. Wonderful, thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ross, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's done. Do you have anything else you'd like to discuss?
No, that, that is, yeah, thank you.
How about, Mr., are we counting on the support already?
Yes.
Like, wow. This is your chair, I might be a little long-winded, so I apologize, but.
Morning.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. I heard that. Just a few, a few action items and a few updates for the commission's awareness. The, the courthouse security campus committee met on, on Friday, I believe Commissioner Ross was there, I was, I was out that day. They, I, I heard from Scott Johnson, the court administrator, that committee wants to move forward with the courthouse security improvement grant. If you recall, the court administration has, has asked for some capital improvement funding in the past to, to remodel and improve the, the entryway at the courthouse, if you will, where the sheriff's deputy sits. And so, but I think it was first quarter of this year, the commission suggested applying for the courthouse security improvement grant. Unfortunately, the costs for the project have increased about twenty-one percent per line item since this was first visited. So, the total estimate for the project is two hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars. As, as you all know, that in that grant, the county has to contribute twenty-five percent. That would bring the county share up to fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. So, I have everything I need to proceed, but I just wanted to make sure the commission was still wanting to proceed with that route, and wanted the commission to be aware of the, the new total project amount and the new match amount. What are we gonna get for a quarter of a million dollars again? I have, I received everything from Mr. Johnson today. This is all the estimates, Mr. Chair. Drywall patching case for Kemlar marble, because it also has to. Do you wanna? Here we go.
Chairman, all members of the commission, Mr. Ford, what, what the proposal is for is to complete a fully restricted entry and exit into the courthouse. So, inside the main doors where the courthouse deputies currently sit, there would be an entry through a magnetometer, and an exit would be through a restricted door that was exit only. I would also include putting the deputy sheriffs on the other side of the, of the hallway there. I would require extensive remodeling, rewiring. It also includes in that bid, if I recall correctly, putting a PA system or an announcement system into the entire courthouse. And if there is a case where there is a active threat in the building or a medical emergency, all floors can be notified at the same time instead of the notification system in there now, which is two-way radios if you're at your desk, and you have it on, out enough, only at specific desks, so, that's what it would, it would entail.
Are you all in board with this?
I'm, I'm all for improvements, you know, comments that we've had over at that meeting, the steering meeting, as noise and change in several years. There has been modifications to it. I did make the capital for the security improvement board aware that the sheriff's office was able to repurpose some of our funds that we were not able to use for transports, because Bismarck did all those transports for us. And the federal government authorized us to utilize those funds to purchase an X-ray machine to scan bags as they go in, instead of us having to handle each one, and we'll have better detection of illegal stuff entering the courthouse. Along with that X-ray machine, there are also a lot of excuse in dollars to retrofit, refit the area. So, there's panels where the X-ray machine will be put, those will be removed, and we'll repurpose them to the other side to enclose the deputy's area, so people won't be able to get in behind them, there'll be an entry and exit door there. So, that tend to, that's coming, again, it depends on where the suppliers can get the equipment to us, how long it takes to get that machine here, et cetera. So, there are some improvements that are coming, it would have been costs anyways, if this project is to move forward, if our district is, is awarded the grant, so.
Yeah, go ahead, we'll start.
So, does that reduce the cost of the county?
When, no, so when this was pitched at the, the meeting that we had earlier this spring, I informed them that the sheriff's office had worked towards purchasing the X-ray machine. That isn't something that I think would have been able to get factored into the original grant. I don't recall exactly this, that we would work on, on that factor, and luckily, there's our money that is available for that.
For clarification of yours, if I might.
Yes.
So, are, I don't quite understand the X-ray, are you getting an X-ray machine, and then there's still one in this bid, or?
That was all, so the X-ray machine, when, when I was first exposed to this in twenty nineteen, that's four weeks ago, before it had to be submitted, we, we looked, we worked with JLG and other companies, Orbeez, electricians, all of these people to put together what we would see in this secure entry. And Mr. Johnson, along with, I believe, Ms. Absy at the time, now retired, had toured some courthouses around the state, and most of them at their security checkpoints have X-ray machines, along with federal courthouses, so that was, I was part of it.
I see, okay, so it's.
So you're not going through the bags.
It's, it's a, it's an X-ray machine and metal detector system.
No, so it would be like at the airport, you throw your stuff on the cart to scan, and then you walk through with it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, there's, but there's two systems, that's what I'm saying, we're gonna do both, yeah, yeah, I, okay.
Mr. Yang.
My question is, the, the cost have gone up, so our share goes up. What, what was it before we got the new price, but what our share have been instead of fifty-seven thousand? What was it, what did we think was going to be?
You know, do you have the twenty nineteen paperwork? I, I do not, I just have to, so, if I can recall pretty closely, which I believe I can, because I looked at it, and it was right around, the total cost prior was around a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So, twenty-five percent of that, you're looking at like thirty-two, somewhere around there.
Thirty thousand, project, around thirty thousand, hundred thousand, basically, yeah.
Our, our share did stop.
Were we getting more because of that, Mr. Ford, or?
I actually need to correct myself, the X-ray machine was part of that.
No, it's, it's, it's just significantly more because of the state of supply chain and where everything is, so.
The other reason, if I may interject, is because the PA system was not in that initial bid. That is something that, after responding to an active shooter call at the courthouse, that is something that became very apparent, that should be installed there.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and just so you, because you apply for it, or going to, doesn't mean you're going to get it.
So, if we did, where would that?
You could decide at that point if you want to move forward. If you get.
To move forward, but yeah.
What, what fund would this, would our share come out of, capital improvements?
Yeah. In the past, you, you, you put the package together with pretty much half everything, it's now writing a letter, you send it in. If, if, if you're selected for the next round, you would go out to Bismarck. This is what I've done in the past when we receive this grant, you go to Bismarck, there's, you sit down, you go through the project with the committee, then, and then they let you know if your county's been selected. They like to give a certain, I don't know the certain percentage, but they like to give a certain percentage to small counties. And then, so usually select more smaller counties than the larger counties, so it's very, it's pretty, it's very competitive on the large county standpoint. Well, and I'll say this, our present system has several security flaws, and it's not the perfect system. And every time I walk in, I look at the deputy, he's kind of open to the public right there, it's not, it's not protected very well, and so we do have to look at doing something. I, I, I think we should.
Move ahead.
Move ahead, if we decide we can't do it, we can always turn it down, but we can, our share of capital improvements, would, you know, our share would be fifty-seven, yeah, and that would be a big help over there.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
I was at the meeting too, and it's, I mean, they do.
I was at the meeting too, and it's, I mean, they do need it over there really bad.
So if you go to the federal building, it's, they have the X-ray machine and everything else.
And Mister Ford, if I'm not mistaken, I think the bigger counties already have the system.
I'm, I don't know, Commissioner Ross.
You might know, sure. I'm aware that Cass County has a pretty, uh, extensive system outside of that. I'm not aware.
I think it really is too.
Wow. Okay. Yeah. Are there any other questions? Could, would anyone want to make a motion to proceed forward with the application?
I would make that motion to proceed.
Okay. Commissioner Ross makes the motion. Second, anyone? Second, second by Commissioner Inge. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Hey, thank you. We'll get started, Mister Chair. Uh, next item, Northeast Human Service lease amendment. Uh, back, back in April, the commission uh, approved some renovations to be done on fourth floor, uh, where the reception area is for Northeast Human Services. Northeast Human Services was, was gonna pay for that, those improvements in the amount of forty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. And, and so the commission just amended the lease that, that amount be included in the lease payment. The project is, is pretty much complete. Northeast made a, a, a request for change order for some additional work. That amounted to four thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. And so what I have for the commission today is, it's called Amendment C, which reflects that change order amount of forty-one, thirty-three, ninety-seven. The county's not paying it. It's saying that they'll pay it to the county in their, in their lease. Just needs, um, commission approval and chair's signature. And, and Ms. Lamstead has also looked at it.
How long is that lease that they, that they would?
Yeah, this, this current lease will end, uh, when the biennium changes. So June, so June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. We'll be looking to renegotiate that lease soon.
It's a pain for remodeling. It looks like they might want to stay awhile.
Yeah.
So.
So Mister Chair, I would just need a, I would just need commission approval and chair's signature on that amendment.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone have a motion?
I'll make the motion to the lease amendment, Northeast Human Service.
Thank you. Any seconds? Second, second by Commissioner Inge. Any further discussion on that matter? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The amendment to the lease of Northeast Human Services is passed. Anything else, Mister Ford?
Yes, sir. If you recall, uh, a few, a few months ago, on an emergency basis, we had to install some cameras in, in the finance and tax area. I talked to the chair at the time and, um, the discussion was we have to, we have to get the cameras installed. And when we get the invoice, I would bring it to the commission. Um, the first invoice is in the amount of one thousand, sixty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. That's for the, uh, the, uh, parts. The labor, the labor invoice has not come yet, but, um, we did receive the first invoice. So my, my request to the commission, the money, that, that's when I was overseeing the I T department, the, the money in the I T department just wasn't there to absorb that, that unexpected cost. So, um, my thoughts, unless Ms. Nelson has different thoughts, it'd be to, for take that out of capital improvements.
Yeah, that'd be, I agree. It was something. Yeah, something we had to have done. Uh, you made the motion to prove there. Thank you.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, next, Mister Forrest.
Yes, sir. Uh, myself, uh, crazy Leon, Bill Grzeszky. We met with, uh, Miller Dunwitty, whom if you, if, if the commission recalls, we hired them to do the assessment and the work plan on the dome of the courthouse, had the first initial meeting with some of their, their, uh, findings. Looking to have, uh, a statement of work and, and, and some quotes by the end of the month, hopefully end of the month, at the earliest sometime in November. Not surprising, a lot of moisture jack damage was found in that dome area. Some of the steel truss look like they've been compromised as well due to the, the years of moisture, uh, damage. Uh, there is some areas of concern behind the brick walls as well. Uh, and they're concerned about seeping into the ceiling of the, of the third floor. So, um, they, they, they were looking for some direction, they being Miller Dunwitty, uh, they have concerns of what else is behind the walls. So I, I directed them to, um, keep going a little bit further and start taking some of the brick wall block off the dome to see what else might be in there that we, we don't know, we don't know. It's, it is gonna add to quote, uh, but I didn't think we had a choice. So I did direct them to expand their study. So just wanted the commission to be aware that it's moving forward. We had our first meeting. I expect something, I expect bringing something to the commission, hopefully by the first meeting in November.
Is it rather, no, no, what's there rather than a year's worth of working on it? So.
It's such a beautiful, beautiful story that we, we need to.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's a hundred.
So will the state help with funding on these historic courthouses? Because some of the small counties have rather historic places too. Or is this just a county expense? This, Mister Chair, Commissioner Inge, Ms. Leon, as, as our grant coordinator, has been looking for state preservation grants. The issue that she has run into is that to apply for a state historical preservation grant, work cannot begin. So we would apply for grant, the project would have to stay on hold until we found out whether or not we got the grant. And it was, it was my discretion that we proceed with the work.
I mean, you couldn't even do the study like they're taking things apart to check it without having the grant.
She, uh, Ms. Leon followed up with, um, and I can't remember the, the, the gal's name at the State Historical Preservation Museum, but she asked her to specifically even check on that. The work cannot commence.
If it's any consolation, usually those grants are a very small amount. So this project is gonna be huge. And small often, that's or two, three thousand dollars. And wow, you know, I guess this could go.
I couldn't, I could not in good conscience tell the work, the, the consultants to hold work until we can cross our fingers and just hope for the best case.
No, we're, we, we have complaints over there from the, the judges. I went over there and had coffee with them and I looked at the, you know, if you go upstairs, it's worth going upstairs. There we've got two different like scaffolds, wood scaffold set up outside the two courtrooms. So that falling plaster doesn't fall in as you walk into the apartment. So scaffold goes up with plywood over you. So it's, we have to get after it right away.
So that, just that update. And then, um, I want to provide the commission an update on, on the Grand Sky fire response situation. Uh, so, so as the commission is well aware, once we executed the lease with the Air Force and, and Grand Sky, which is still on Grand Forks Air Force Base, essentially was separated to become a for-profit entity. It was the Air Force's opinion that, um, the fire, the fire, fire response, three nineteen fire response could not legally be the primary responder to Grand Sky. And so luckily the, the city of Grand Fork stepped in and, and we signed, uh, an M O U for the city to be our primary responder, which is not ideal. We've always known it would be temporary. Um, that, that being said, I'm, I'm happy to let the commission know that, uh, last, last week, uh, Ms. Leon and myself met with Tom Sawyer, Civil Engineering Squadron Leadership, out of Grand Sky. And we think we have a permanent solution identified finally. And so we're continuing to work that. Commissioner Inge and myself will be out at Langley Air Force Base in a couple of weeks. And we plan to visit with A C C leadership and I'll, 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 I'm happy to fill in the board um, offline on what the entire details are, because I don't want to hold up the meeting, but we think we have a permanent solution identified. We'll still have to find, uh, kind of a temporary uh, agreement with the base, but we're confident we have, have identified something. It'll just take a little bit of time. So. The last thing, Mister Chair, is going back to the Maryfield interchange. I was in on that D O T meeting that Mister Kenbill mentioned. Um, and, and the D O T director was very clear that in order for the county and/or city to receive state federal funds on an interchange project or a bridge over the Red River, the county and/or city must complete a N E P A and the engineering hydraulic studies before we could qualify for any state federal aid. Uh, so it would be, it, Mister Chair, be my recommendation, it's, it's the board's, uh, discretion, of course, that I reach out to Stephanie Hallford, the M P O director, and that sometime soon she, she come before the commission and, and just give you a five-minute presentation on, on their, their work on their field bridge and interchange. So you can hear some of the data. And, and where the M P O is at in the process, get that from her. Before the commission can really discuss funding and preparing to fund N E P As and hydraulics. And as far as the city, I've had discussions with city leadership and they are, they are willing to work at the county on a Maryfield Bridge. But their current priority is, is the, the forty-second grade separation, then it's the forty-seventh interchange, then it would be Maryfield. So just to give the commission an idea of where the city's priorities are. So, Mister Chair, that's all I have. Unless there's questions for me.
Questions? Thank you, Mister Ford. It's, it's turning.
Mister Chair, members of the board, I just have one item and, uh, that was included in the packet. My request is a, uh, motion to the chair's signature on the contract for defense services. This is a contract that this wants and it was want to offer to provide, um, defense services on civil commitment pieces and mentally ill and heavily dependent, uh, individuals. This contract is essentially the same as we have had in place for several years. The exception is the amount of the monthly payment under this contract. For many, many years, the monthly amount has been forty-one hundred dollars for their services per month. They have requested an increase, uh, to forty-four hundred dollars per month. If you recall, uh, not too long ago, Ms. Darla Schuman, um, previously held this contract for a number of years. Her and I had a number of conversations about how she felt that the amount should be increased. But it, it wasn't ever increasing, didn't push it that hard. When she could no longer continue with this contract, Swanson and Workup agreed to take over this contract at the same rate that Ms. Schuman's providing services. But there was an understanding that, um, they would do it at the same rate to kind of get a feel for the time commitment that it would take. Um, now they've done this for, uh, a year now, um, and have a good idea of what the time commitment is. Um, and they feel that it would be appropriate to increase that to forty-four hundred dollars. Based on our conversations with the Swanson and Workup law firm, I knew this request was coming. And so, um, I didn't ask for any increase in our budget, but I readjusted some items in our budget so that this line item would allow for an increase. Um, and I reduced the budget, I believe, for patient care because that hasn't been as costly as it has in the past. And so, um, I think if this is approved by the board, it would not have any impact on our budget for action.
I think it's appropriate, don't you? They mock their ass. I mean, Ms. Schuman thought that the work was more than what she was being paid for. And I guess the work of it, Swanson do also.
I would agree. And, you know, to be completely honest, I'm, I'm surprised that it's taken this long to get to the increased amount. I expected it to happen on the.
Yes. Question about, there's all kinds of deadlines they have to meet, just to meet people in certain time periods and so on. How are they doing and who monitors that? To see whether they're furnishing the service that, that they have to service according to the company. Is, is that going well?
Mister, Mister Inge, members of the board, uh, it's our office's observation that it is going very well. Um, we do have an attorney assigned to these cases that work very closely with the defense attorney on all of them. And, um, as you're probably aware, these cases go very quickly through the court system. And so the meeting of the deadlines is, is imperative. And I, I think it's been going very well.
Have a motion to approve the contract for defense services.
Second.
Motion by Inge, second by not to approve the contract for defense services. Any further discussions on this contract? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? motion passed.
Thank you.
One or down in favor, what's? Excellent. Commissioner Knob, how's your week been going?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, yes.
Right. Um, well, I have life reports since we met last and, uh, things are going well up there. The music garden has been and it's very, very nice. And so, uh, kids are loving it as our adults. So, um, also I, I didn't participate, well, I didn't participate. I listened Saturday on, um, working for the Northeast. That was interesting to you, the updates on that. I did have my rotor grader training and it was, went wonderfully well. And whoever gets the the portfolio for.
Patients.
Department.
Patients.
I think you should always attend. You always, you always learn something and it was great. The, the, the presenters were, did a wonderful job. I think that there were five or six staff members that were there. And, um, they were all very receptive responsive to the information that was being shared with them. So there's a lot of good interaction. And it was nice to meet some of them because they are typically out in the outline area. And so you don't often get to see them or meet them. And so, it went well. So, and, um, like I guess three, two of us, three of us attended the wake-up U and D. That was very well done. And, um, a fun morning. I got going now. That's about it.
I agree. You, that weekend, you, it was a lot of fun.
I totally expected to hear the president talk more, but he didn't. You know, and, uh, and it was a shared stage, but they put that together very, very well. It was, it was fun. Yeah. He's got quite the sense of humor.
Very well.
Quick witty, yeah.
Yes.
Nice, man.
Commissioner Inge.
Well, I was gone for a week, but I did return the, uh, U A S summit reception at Grand Sky yesterday along with Mister Ford and the chair. Paul, there were a lot of people there. I, I talked to some of the people who'd be exhibiting. It was interesting to hear their thoughts on North Dakota, since they were, they were in Michigan and other places. And they're all thinking that this is a great place because of the open skies and the great weather for flying. And well, I think it was interesting. That's all.
Courthouse security meeting, I attended that last Friday, along with Sheriff Schneider. We had the meeting in what used to be, uh, the clerk's office and that was the courtroom. They did it, he reasonably remodeled that whole thing inside. It, it amazed me. And, uh, I see the need for re, redoing that security system over there. It's been that way for a long time. And, uh, I went to the North Dakota Association of Counties with, uh, that auditor and, uh, yeah, no, um, well, Nick was there. Oh, Nick brought up your root grade training to. It was all positive. And, you know, he has a backup motor grader. There you go. So.
Yeah. I didn't get in and drive. First of all, I could never have gotten up that ladder into it.
But anyway, that North Dakota Association of Counties was very interesting. And today they talked about uh, some legislative issues that will be coming up. And, uh, they talked about the retirement. They talked what they call the legacy stream, which is something that's gonna open up that will. which is something that's gonna open up that will allow to make that retirement system more solvent. And so those things will all be coming up. They talked about the property tax issue, about cutting property taxes. The other thing they talked about is the biggest part of the pie is the school systems. And the school systems normally get their money from mill levy from the state of North Dakota. They're gonna wanna do away with that bill levy. They wanna do cash. Because a mill levy is different in various areas, so they wanna make sure it's more fair. So they're looking at changing that to be a a cash to the schools, so. Anyway, it's about it.
Let me see, I went to a crackstone center meeting, two weeks ago, the construction detention center or whatever. I missed the last one because of a down appointment here on Monday, but both of them were still, they're still drawing out schematics of how it might look and how it might sit, so still don't have anything real firm yet on that. Commissioner Ross and I and our entourage over here, we were we were up at Gilway for a home rule meeting and then I was also one at one at Manville. Both of them went very well and they were attended pretty well for small communities. We had a nice turnout of both. Asked good questions. And I also, I was out with Commissioner Engen and Mr. Ford to the Grand Sky event that social big tent they had up there by General Atomic Center in near North of Roman. It was really nice to see about twenty-two global locks I saw part there, we had to be worked on. Yeah, they're probably two inside the hangar. And talked to a couple of different people there who were from companies that will be doing work there and they were excited. The one gentleman, he couldn't wait, we've gotta get hangers to this out here. Need a place for us to stay or live out here, which I'm not sure what he meant on that. But they they have, you know, they're concerned about at winter time where they can't get back into town or whatever, but they've got a lot of plans in that alongside. Real positive thing out there with those companies and it's a it's a, just a treat to meet those people that come in, like you were talking to a gentleman from Michigan and Colorado, we met a retired Navy person from, I think it was Talus that was there. And they're all just excited about North Dakota and Grand Sky, so more to come. And that's pretty much it for me.
Okay, I just have one question. Is there any thought or possibility of commission getting together to have discussion about?
So, no, we can, we can, I talked, well, I talked, yes, we can. I talked with the mayor. The city had made an inquiry about the funding of the wastewater project that they're working on. And I told the mayor that we were not going to do anything on that funding until the CFIS report, I think it's Committee on Investments, Foreign Investments. And until we see the results of those also that coming in, more to come later with him. Yeah, so that's where that's at on that.
So when do you anticipate we could have a meeting? And I have personal reasons or not personal reasons, but I wanna be part of that discussion. And, you know, and my time is limited. And so, you know, I don't think it would hurt for us to meet sometime in the very near future to have that discussion.
We'd be meeting without full knowledge of.
I know, but you know what? You have to look at is whether that CFIS decision comes back or against. It's bigger than that, you know, and just because they say it's okay. There's a lot of stuff there that we need to really think about because it has a huge effect on still could have a huge effect on our air force base and it could still have a huge effect on Grand Sky. Those of which we are very much involved with.
Yeah.
And very dependent on, and we want to be there to support them.
And I think all of those people are waiting for the CFIS report too. They're waiting to see what that says.
But I think we need to look at, if they come back and they say it's okay, is it?
I don't know, I guess. I.
Want to risk maybe.
They have more knowledge, they have more knowledge.
You still wanna risk losing the base, you still wanna risk maybe reducing missions in our base? You still want to risk losing tenants or not getting tenants at Grand Sky? I can see it's bigger than that. I mean, they can say, CFIS can say it's okay. But we're still gonna feel ramifications or we're still gonna see for half ramifications from that.
Doesn't it depend a little bit on what they say that they're, we're not the scientists who can determine whether or not there's a security risk. It strikes me that it's frightening that that there could be a security risk, risk, and and we need to know what Air Force experts or DOD experts have to say about this and.
Everybody's busy not taking a position on it, but.
No, and we wouldn't take.
Well, okay, all right.
How how could we take a position yet? Another Chinese company in town.
Well, I know everybody comes back and says we have another Chinese company in town, but you know what? That was twenty or thirty years ago. It was a different world when they moved here. All right, well, ten years, ten, more than that maybe, but that was a different world when they moved here. And there were no fears or thoughts of espionage or anything. That wasn't a biggie back then. But things have changed and it's a different world.
Well, I'm thinking maybe we should, this is in October, we're we're, we think we're supposed to hear back in November on that. So maybe we shouldn't look at the first part of November to see if we've heard anything and then we could meet on it. Is that reasonable, three weeks on?
This is Mr. Chair members, Commissioner, they talked to Mr. Phelan. They're expecting, they expect the CFIS report end of November. And then there's a forty-five day comment period, which could be extended. Just for the commission's awareness.
Well, Christian off would like a meeting and I don't have any problems with a meeting. Are you at the date point?
Well, I know.
Anyone have a date point?
Every day you come up with, I'll make sure I'm available.
I've got at least five days, like not available, so if you should be, I'd like to look at it. What about?
Maybe an hour before the next committee meeting?
We're gone for that one. Okay.
Or you're online.
It's like, yeah. Well, I don't know, we'll have to see. This Thursday? About like ten o'clock on the twentieth, that one. For me.
That's as soon as we can do it.
Next week is a problem for me. Twentieth of ten.
A special commission meeting.
That will determine how many people we have to open up the wall for. Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna relive all of the comments we've had the past two, three calls. Commissioner Knob has got some comments she wants to make, so. Ten o'clock, commission meeting relative to what you want to call it.
Discussion.
Okay, that's fine. And yeah, you could, we break that day, there's also economic development, so ten o'clock is early this week. Yeah. So, see the day there. Why not? Open up your another day for you. All right, we'll set that, you'll set off. Okay, next is the unfinished new business.
Chairman, members of the commission, the State Fair is looking for you to appoint one delegate. And they need that information in writing by October.
A couple of questions. Who is our delegate? Do we have to appoint one?
I have been the delegate in camps, but Bob got the
Oh, that's right, oh, yeah.
It changed with our portfolios at the beginning of this year. This is a meeting that, I mean, as a commissioner, you're in can't vote on anything. It's a four-hour drive to why not? For a meeting that starts at one, that probably lasts a couple hours and you try it home again, so. You know, I I think it's important for their board members to be there and participate, but I don't know that.
Can they be invited to it?
Can they? I think they're appointing or asking for an appointment for someone from our board, I think is what they're asking. And so typically there's, you know, two or three of them from the fair board that go to that. I think, or at least they have said they intended to. But I think that, given the fact that you can't vote on anything, given the fact that it's information sharing. We're back from them, we probably need the.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a long way to go.
It is. Would you take it if we appoint you and then see if they can zoom it or just get a report? Because I, I agree with Diane. We don't have a vote on anything.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine.
To be considered courtesy that they invite us, you know, and that's appreciative, but you know, you have to allocate five hundred dollars.
Hey, then we have the old deal, settlement first check looks like, is that right?
That is right, that's our annual amount and it's, we've set up a fund with the money in and it will stay there until it is told to us how the money can be spent.
So we, we still don't know how the borrowers are spending that money. It's gonna, I'm sure it's gonna be for treatment facilities or whatever. Yeah. Okay, well, so we got that covered. Next. That's all that we have.
Yeah, I would make a motion, Richard.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Do we have a second? Mr. Knob. All right, thank you everyone.